Item number three, business arising from the minutes. Number one, a notice of motion by Councilor McQueen. That's item 3A.
Mr. Warden?
I'm sorry?
If you can move that motion.
Thank you. Moved by Councilor McQueen, seconded by Councilor Desai, and the motion's on the floor. Councilor McQueen, I'm assuming that you would want to speak to that motion?
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and to county councilors and the public here today.
Mr. Warden, I feel this is a very important day today.
A very important day that I feel that can move Gray County forward. So the simple fact is, is I know the last two years, this has been a very controversial, in my opinion, very decisive, or divisive, I should say, topic that has, I feel, has not moved the county of Gray forward, but has sort of put us into a bit of a stall mode. I'd like to see us moving forward today with this motion being supported with regards to rescinding the original motion for the point of selling Gray Gables and creating it into assisted living. I feel this motion, Mr. Warden, is something that we need to rewrite and re-put in place for moving us forward with long-term care in the county of Gray. I happen to wear a tie today that was probably 20-year vintage around this area, and it's the old Gray County tie and the old symbol of Gray County. I wear this today because I feel the decision from people that were here before who felt it was important to have three homes in the county of Gray and continued to support three homes in the county of Gray, which I feel is, to us here today, a really important decision that we have this morning around this table, to continue the vision, continue the purpose of looking after those that need long-term care in Gray County. I feel also today is an important day and an exciting day for the simple fact is, we know we have an opportunity, an opportunity of information that wasn't available to this county council two years ago, and that is the ability to apply for new beds. You know that the previous government announced the ability to apply for new beds. I know we did have the opportunity to look at that somewhere around the middle of last year, May of last year, and the previous council decided that that wasn't something that they felt was important enough to do. We have a new council here.
We have 10 new members around the table.
I feel that possibly those 10 new members are here for a particular reason, to do the right thing in the county of Gray. And so I feel that moving forward today with the announcement or the availability to add new beds to our complement here in the county of Gray, that those opportunities are there for us to ask. The ability to expand, or not only to redevelop Rockwood Terrace, the ability to expand those numbers for that community of Durham, along with the ability to move forward with Gray Gables, Gray Gables with a design for a fourth wing. I know back in 1999 when that was opened, I've been given plans that shows that fourth wing. We know that-
If I could interrupt you just a quick second, Councilor McQueen, there are two motions that you have. Right now, the motion that's on the floor is motion 3A, which is talking about rescinding the decision to sell Gray Gables and an amendment with respect to Rockwood. So I would ask you to just maybe keep that in mind when you address.
Okay. With regards to the moving forward with Gray Gables, we know that there's a new hospital that is coming. They just redid the signs this past week, so I think that's probably a good indication that something's coming. I spoke with our MP, Bill Walker, last night, and in his mind, steady as we go, it's in the queue, so it's just a matter of time before that is moving forward. The reason I bring up the Markdale Hospital is that's in close proximity to Gray Gables. Also, we know we have the community health center there that's also in close proximity to Gray Gables. So maybe I'll wrap things up in the sense, Mr. Warden, in the sense that we have the ability to have a long-term care facility that's going to be smack dab next to a new hospital that's coming. And we did talk about the other day that ALCs are a problem, that, I shouldn't say a problem, but it is a situation in new hospitals today that those patients are waiting for long-term care facilities to move to. We know moving with the new hospital from 14 beds, that is the current hospital in Markdale, to four, we want to make sure that those four beds are there for those that really need it for, whether it's emergency care or whatever, and having the ability to have Gray Gables right next door to that, and as the second motion is in place, or next to come, to expand on that, what I think makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Councilor Bartnicki?
I am going to sit with your permission, Mr. Warden, just a little closer to the mic. I believe, with all due respect to those who made the decision in 2017, there's new data on the table, there's new information, and even when that decision was made, the data used was 2011, it was out of date then. 2016 data, which we have discussed, is also out of date now, and an example would be the predictions for the east part of Gray County with respect to population growth. What was predicted was to take place over 15 years. It has happened in the last two years. The numbers have increased that much. We have a burgeoning senior population, growing at a rate faster than anywhere else in the province at this time. To leave us without Gray Gables leaves the eastern and southern part of Gray Gables, of Gray County, with inequitable access to long-term care at a great distance. If you have been on the east side of Gray County, Craig Leith, or the south parts, and driven to the other two facilities, you will see that you're lucky to get there in an hour and a half, and that is on a very good day. That puts people who are in need of care, very divided from their families and friends, we're in a county without a good transportation system, and I think that it is time to gather that data and make a good decision. We do have those facts now. I think it would be very inequitable for us to make a decision that does not support keeping Gray Gables on the table. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson?
Thank you, and through you, Warden Hicks. I am pleased to support the motion to rescind that is before us. I support keeping Gray Gables as a Gray County long-term care home in Markdale. I also support the redevelopment, that is, the new build of Rockwood Terrace in Durham as soon as possible. Both of these long-term care homes are essential and integral to the Gray County community fabric, for the residents of these homes, for the families, for Gray County as a community, and for the long-term care home residents for the future. There is a community support for both of these homes. Our demographic is getting older. We have seniors in our population. People want to reside in long-term care homes in Gray County. These homes represent jobs and have a positive economic impact. The new provincial government has announced 15,000 beds will be available. We have long-term care needs today. We have a responsibility to be future-ready and take this opportunity to request more beds. Rockwood Terrace must be rebuilt to a Class A facility. There is a critical timeline associated with this. Gray Gables must remain as a Gray County long-term care home. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor O'Leary?
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I've reviewed the timeline of the Gray Gables discussion, and the following is what I've reviewed. March 23, 2017, staff proposed the merger of Gray Gables and Rockwood Terrace. Council took their time by deferring the vote until May 11, 2017. May 30, 31 of 2017, county hosted two public meetings to outline the proposal and to answer any questions. May 11, 2017, an information report presented to council summarizing comments received. The vote was deferred again to allow for more information to be collected. March 25, 2017, recorded vote and the majority of council supported the merger. In April of 2018, there was a significant change. The liberal government announced new long-term care bed licenses. That was an announcement. Long-term care director Lynn Johnson presented a plan that would keep Gray Gables operating as a 66-bed home while constructing a new Rockwood Terrace with an additional 28 beds for a total of 128 to replace the current facility. Again, this was a significant change. May 10, 2018, there was a second recorded vote held, and council again supported the merger. Gray County council went through an open and fair process. They delayed their decision to allow for public meetings and to communicate with the ratepayer. A second vote was held because there was a reason. There was a significant change. Council again voted to support the merger. Whether you agree with it or not, that has to be respected. I have reviewed the entire process, and I've looked at the financial situation. There have been no substantial changes since the last decision. A new council doesn't change the Gray Gables situation, and therefore there is no reason to rescind the decision. I highly doubt the Gray Gables would ever close. It can become a private retirement home or assisted living similar to homes we have in On Sound. Kelso Pines, Hannah Walker, John Joseph, I have a personal story to share that's relative. This past summer, my mother, at the age of 82, went from driving her own car and carrying her own groceries into the house, to unable to drive, walk, or live in her own home within weeks. In my mother's words, "If I'm going anywhere, I'm going to Lee Manor." This was my first experience exploring any of this, and of course, there's a waiting list at Lee Manor. We took her to Kelso Pines because we had no other choice. At Kelso Pines, she has two nurses that help her from her chair to her wheelchair, from her wheelchair back to her lazy boy or bed. It takes two nurses to take her to the bathroom or for a bath. Just in the last week, we have checked with Lee Manor, and she's moved to second on the list. We've had this discussion with our mother, and ironically, she wants to stay at Kelso Pines. Gray Gables may be changing, but the change could be a lot less than you think. For me, I look at the previous council, the same as I hope councils will look back at us, with nothing but respect. We are all leaders and elected officials, and we are to make decisions in an open and fair process. After reviewing the process of the previous council, I will respect their decision and will not support the motion to rescind.
I would just ask, for those visiting today, we appreciate you coming. It's especially with the slippery roads and whatnot. Glad to have you here, but I would just ask respectfully that you not interfere with the process, if you could. Are there any other speakers? Councilor Mackey?
Thank you, Warden. Well, I'm not going to disagree with a couple of points that Mr. O'Leary made, but, Councilor O'Leary, but yes, the previous council did vote to close Gray Gables, but previous councils to that throughout the ages have voted to support long-term care and additional long-term care. In 2012, 2013, that council was looking for additional beds. So I certainly support Gray Gables, I support Rockwood. I want to see additional beds in Gray County. It's important for our seniors, it's important for our juniors to have a place to go visit their seniors. Long-term care, I went to two public meetings, one in Durham and one in Markdale, and the people that came out, there were hundreds of people supporting long-term care. We're here to represent the voices of the people. I think they've spoken loudly, they want to have three long-term care, and I'll certainly be supporting three homes in Gray County. Thank you.
Maybe I'll go with Councilor Soever, if you don't mind, yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. A lot of this discussion has revolved around finances and dollars and cents, but really, what's important is looking after elderly people. And when you look at the distances involved, it's very important, and it's very important for outcomes, that people actually get to still see their friends and neighbors. And I think that's why previous councils have always supported three homes, and that's why I think it's very important that we have them. It's not about the dollars, it's about the outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Desai?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to share a quote by Scott, Bruce Browner. The tax money belongs to the taxpayers, it doesn't belong to the bureaucracy. Every time that this council, and when I say this council, I mean the Gray County council, has debated, discussed the long-term care issue, people have turned up in huge numbers to call for status quo. Having said that, I think it's important that we not use dollars and cents as a way to rationalize whatever decision we make. I emphasize with staff that there is staffing issues, but we need to work on different, more productive solutions around that in order to work on those, not solutions such as reducing the number of county-run long-term care homes. Just a quick statistic, as per the 2006 census, less than 20% of Gray County's population were 65-plus. Come to 2016 census, which I can agree with, Councilor Bartnicki, is outdated by now, the population is almost 25%. We're consistently seeing a growth in the number of seniors and the number of seniors, the concentration of seniors in population. So I think it's important, and I support keeping Gray Gables open as a county-run long-term care home. And of course, I do also support Rockwood Terraces to remain, to be upgraded to an A-class facility, and which is why I seconded the motion that's on the floor today.
If nobody else is going to speak, I'll speak.
Okay, Councilor McQueen?
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden. Certainly happy to hear some of the debate and discussion, that's what makes us who we are. Just in summary, there's been mention about two public meetings, one in Durham and one in Markdale. Well, I know the one in Markdale, that there were so many people attended, that the complex on the upper floor could not hold everyone. The lower floor was downstairs, there was close to 350 people at that meeting. I know the county, I think the county had a moderator at that meeting, I think some of it was recorded, and there was a lot of good discussion. But somebody asked a question that night, "Does anybody in this room support the selling and the closing and the selling off of Gray Gables?" And not one person put their hand up and said yes. That's 350 people, Mr. Warden. We talk about public process, we talk about, I mean, we don't have 350 people here today, but I'm sure the 350 people minds of these people here today would have liked to have been here. So I think that's to be noted. We talk about decisions that we make, and decisions that previous councils make, and I appreciate, yes, we do respect the people that have made decisions in the past, but that's why we have elections every four years, to put people in place, or to reaffirm those people that have been around here to be in place. There was a situation, I shouldn't say a situation, a decision made in Simcoe County a number of years back, I just can't think about the exact year, maybe it was 2010. It was called Site 40, and it was a waste management site that they were proposing, a mega site that was north of Ellenville. And those elected officials made those decisions, and there was a lot of opposition, a lot of opposition, concerns about the water in the area and everything that goes along with that type of site. Well, election came in, and that decision was overruled. And we probably look back in today as that was probably the right decision that was made, considering the implications that that decision had. We, as Gray County, have three long-term care homes. We talk about the private sector having long-term care homes, but there's nothing in place that makes them geographically place those long-term care homes. It's a private, it's a private, it's a private company that puts those in place. Certainly, we heard at our education session on Tuesday that certainly with the lens, they try to, you know, work with those to try to geographically possibly put them in place, but we just heard last week that the local lens are now, are going to be changed. So there's a whole dynamics moving forward. So from the sense of a municipal long-term care homes, we have three of them. I think most of us would agree, geographically, they are placed equally, or somewhat equally, through Gray County. Again, a decision that I think we all respect, I certainly respect, from the decision-makers before I and all of us, where made that decision to have those three homes. Just as a side story, Mr. Warden, we talk about data. As you're quite aware, the local school board was looking at closing a school in Markdale called Beavercrest, from data, 2014 data. Well, certainly, we see in the last year, the data that's coming out of Blue Mountains is not even accurate, from the growth projections up to 2035 or whatever, and surpassed that in two years or one year. We had to prove to that school board that the data was wrong, and there were, the growth numbers were wrong. Look at what happened in, or what's happening in Southgate with the data that's happening there. That turned around in a very short time. So we talk about data, we're talking, today, we're talking about today. Some of the data that was presented to us on Tuesday, and that's been presented to the past councils, is 2011 data. That's old data. We're talking about today and the future, and the next 20 years. That's, I had a conversation again with our local MPP, and he said about long-term care new homes, he said, "Think about the future, 10, 20 years out." That's why we're here today, to think about the future. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think we're ready to call the question. I just want to clarify, and perhaps our clerk can assist here, what we are voting on and what we're not voting on, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. You are voting to rescind the second clause of Resolution CC 3117 regarding the sale of Gray Gables and requesting that the application to the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care be amended to include only the 100 beds at Rockwood Terrace, be redeveloped to a Class A facility.
And the other motion will come after, okay? All right, so I called the question in, all those in, sorry?
I'd like to ask a question or a clear vote, please, Mr. Warden.
Councilor Mackey?
Yes.
Councilor Gamble?
Yes.
Councilor Burley? Councilor Carlton? Councilor McQueen?
In favor.
Councilor Desai?
In favor.
Councilor Patterson? Warden Hicks?
Nay.
Councilor Columbus?
Nay.
Councilor Keveney?
In favor.
Councilor Boddy?
Against.
Councilor O'Leary?
Opposed.
Councilor Woodbury?
In favor.
Councilor Millen?
Yea.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Soever?
In favor.
Councilor Bartnicki?
In favor.
Councilor Robinson?
In favor.
Councilor Hutchinson?
In favor.
The resolution is passed, 5139. Okay, moving on with the agenda, we are now dealing with item 3B. Can I get a mover, put that matter on the table? Councilor Robinson, seconded by Councilor Bartnicki. It's, I'm assuming, Councilor McQueen, that you want to speak to the motion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks for the mover and seconder putting that on the table. Again, when I crafted this motion, it was a motion that I felt was a starting point in regards to Rockwood Terrace. Certainly, all of us support the redevelopment of Rockwood and moving to the Class A facility moving to the Class A, it's something that's mandated by 2025, and I think we're all supporting, I wonder if we are all supporting that redevelopment. The reason I put down there of 60 for that facility was only from the simple fact is, is I think in my mind, we brought the 128 file that came from, or the report that came from CNA, supporting that block, and I think it was made, certainly with the idea of not only doing the redevelopment, but expanding those homes for that community. I put down in this, certainly this motion, a minimum of 60, but it's certainly at the decision of this county council, if that's the right number or amendments we can make. But I felt of putting that motion on the floor was important, that we look at, not only the redevelopment, but expanding those beds on that facility.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a question or clarification, I note in the last clause of the motion, it reads, "And move forward with expanding the fourth wing." I'm just wondering, that's almost a whole nother issue, as opposed to asking for the additional beds, which I support, but I'm wondering if the mover and the seconder would be willing to remove that last clause, because that ties us to actually building the facility, the fourth wing, regardless whether we get the extra beds or not. And I think the extra wing is contingent on actually getting more beds.
Councilor Robinson?
Well, thank you, and through you, Warden Hicks. I would like the motion to stand as is. This is the most opportune time to look at the increasing our number of beds in Gray County, specifically for Rockwood Terrace and Gray Gables. And it is, it is a challenge and an opportunity that Gray County should embrace, so with that, I would say that the motion would stand as is.
Okay. Other speakers? Council Boddy?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm with my neighbor here. In the long run, because it costs taxpayers money for beds where there's private care that provided services, my first choice would be that private sector applies for more beds in Gray, and I certainly supported that last council, which was a resolution to support private sector getting more beds. Given the decision that we just made, we need to have more beds to make these homes efficient, because they're not efficient now. We need more beds. So I support that we apply for more beds, will support it. I agree that this says that we're going to move ahead with a building that would be contingent on us getting those beds, and we wouldn't move ahead with a new building if we weren't going to get those new beds. So I won't support the motion as it is. If it's defeated, then I assume somebody will remake a motion in a minute that would be the next step.
Okay, and before I proceed, Council Millen, just to let you know, you can make an amendment, it's not the mover and seconder that controls that. Any other speakers?
I wonder if the-
Sorry? Councilor Bartnicki?
Thank you. I wonder if we could consider an amendment, make the request for the additional beds in total, and direct that the Long-Term Care Committee of Management actually make the decision about where those beds would work best to achieve the efficiencies that we heard about on Tuesday in terms of the 32-bed units and that sort of information. I don't know how exactly to craft that, but I'm wondering if that would be acceptable.
Just one quick second.
Yeah, I think, I think I agree. Right.
Last clause meaning expanding the fourth wing?
And move forward with expanding the fourth wing.
So that would have to be, so Councilor Bartnicki, I guess what I'm hearing you saying is that you might want to consider putting forward a motion to amend by removing and move forward with expanding the fourth wing. Is that your wish?
I think that the decision on where to put the beds, if we are now maintaining three facilities, is best made based on what efficiencies we can achieve, the number of beds were actually granted, and how that would actually work best to get to where we want. We want good service. We want good service, we want to protect taxpayers, and I think we have some expertise outside of this council that can advise us on those things.
So, I'm not getting any clarity with respect to, are you amending the motion that's before us, or are you...
Yes, I'm suggesting an amendment to the motion.
That it be amended?
Yes.
If that is the case, then I'll be looking for a seconder for that.
Point of order, Mr. Warden, before you move forward, another option, that this motion can be deferred to that working group, with no decision having to be made, and come back with recommendations to this motion that is on the table.
Certainly isn't...
Get into the dialogue of who thinks this or whatever. It comes back to that working group to come back with recommendations on this motion.
Okay. That's what I'm suggesting. One sec, I'm seeing a lot of hands, so there's obviously a lot of interest here.
That was a point of order, Mr. Warden.
Do we, do we want to move forward with requesting additional beds now? As, I think that's a question that councils should give staff direction on. Do we want to pursue additional beds?
Yes.
Full stop. And then beyond that, if that's what Counselor Bartnicki and Counselor Robinson are suggesting, is then pending a decision from the province, we can talk about how best to use the beds that are, would be eventually awarded if we were successful.
Yes, I think that what we're saying is, request the beds. The ministry has made three announcements about additional beds. Request them. Find out if we are successful, at what degree of success, and then the working group can actually come back and help us to determine the efficiencies and the equity across Gray. Those kinds of things can be managed by the working group.
Okay. So, I guess what I'm hearing is that you are moving that that last sentence be removed for now, which reads, "And move forward with expanding the fourth wing." And if that is the case, and I hear the justification for all of that, your explanation for it, but we would need a seconder in order for that to proceed. Counselor Millen seconds it. Now, we can have discussion about that amendment. Counselor Burley, you've had your hand up a long time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I tend to agree with Counselor McQueen here, that I really feel that this notice of motion is a wee bit premature. I think you should go back to the Long-Term Care Committee to have a lot of discussions on amount of requested beds, discussions on a fourth wing at Gray Gables, a whole lot of discussion. We need more information and discussion on. We have Ciena there to help us with a lot of these discussions, and I really feel strongly that it should be, the motion should be rescinded, and it should be put back to Long-Term Care Committee to come back with recommendations for county council.
Thank you. Counselor Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think the question that county has to answer today is whether we want to apply for additional beds. I think Counselor Boddy brought that up. And in light of the previous decision, I think it is important that we be allowed, and that the Long-Term Care Committee be allowed to seek out additional beds. We had a report back in April, I believe, of last year, showing us what an additional 28 beds at Rockwood Terrace would do for operational efficiencies. It was in the tune of $1.2 million in operational efficiencies. I think some of those same efficiencies could be achieved at Gray Gables, but I think we need the opportunity to examine those through our Long-Term Care Committee. So, I would simply like the county council grant us the opportunity to seek out additional beds, or that staff be allowed to seek out additional beds. We can do the fine tuning then at another level, and bring that back to county council for a final decision. Thank you.
So, you're in favor of the motion as it has been mentioned?
Seeking additional beds, absolutely.
Counselor Robinson, about your...
Yes, through you, Warden Hicks, I would absolutely support the motion before us. The main focus needs to be on looking for additional beds for Gray County, and I think that is something that we need to accelerate on. This is absolutely the appropriate time with the, with the new government at the provincial level to take a look at this, and based on needs at Gray County, so I would absolutely support that. We have a Long-Term Care Board of Management that, through their mandate, can take a look at this and report back to Gray County, so I am absolutely in support of the fine tuning on the initial motion that I put forward. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Counselor McQueen?
Just sort of add some clarity, and I apologize, Mr. Warden, not speaking to the second part of that notice of motion, because it was only on the screen was the first part of that. I think the idea of the fourth wing, could have been worse than to say the possibility of expanding the fourth wing. I don't know, we need to get into the whole discussion about that. The reason why I brought the fourth wing, since 1999, they've always talked about adding the fourth wing. I have a plan that shows the fourth wing. So, one would think, or one from an understanding point of that building, it was designed for the next expansion on that fourth wing. It's sort of all there. So, if there's a different way of expanding Gray Gables, I'm sure, you know, by applying for the beds, that's going to be all figured out through engineering design anyway. So, whether it's expanding the fourth wing or not, but it's always been known that the fourth wing is where that expansion has always been talked about. So, I wasn't trying to dream up something that was out of midair. It's something that has shown, I didn't have it, I don't have it today, but shows a plan, it talks about the fourth wing. So, that's why it was in there. Like I said, the wordsmithing of possible expanding the fourth wing, however, I'm not going to get hung up on the part of fourth wing, because that'll be engineering. The whole part of that notice of motion that I brought forward was, was the part of, was moving the 66 beds to Rockwood, and that number of 166, I use multiples of 32, which is, it talks about in that side. The part of the 30, again, both of those notice of motions talked about minimum. It was, it was, it was there to create discussion. So, that's what it's doing, and that's the bigger part. So, moving, but just for clarity on this motion, it talks about removing that part of like expanding the fourth wing, but it doesn't say taking it back to the Long-Term Care meeting. So, if this passes, that would be the automatic? Just clarity.
What we are voting on, what we're discussing right now is the amended, the amendment to the motion, which removes and move forward with expanding the fourth wing. That's what we're on right now.
And that, and, says that, and move forward with expanding the fourth wing to be removed from the last clause. So, removing that, but I don't see where it gives direction, it goes back to the working group. What does it say that?
Okay, so, Kim?
And I think your point about how this might be assumed that it would go back, or that would be the direction of council, I think we can weave that in there. I have one other question, though. Does council wish to be specific about the allocation of those beds? Or are we simply going to pursue a minimum of 90 beds, and then, and we could put this in, then then that would be, once we knew how many beds we were successful in obtaining, then you could have a project with the Committee of Management to determine the optimal use of those beds?
Just a point of clarity, Mr. Warden. By passing this motion, that's sort of saying what we're asking for.
This, this...
Doesn't say that you're going back to the committee. That's my point, is it's, by passing this motion with the removal of the fourth wing, it's supporting 60 and 30.
Correct.
And I guess what I'm wanting clarity from council about is, do you wish to be so specific about the beds being a specific number, one place or another? That might create, I'm thinking that maybe creates a level of complexity that it'll just mean more process. If we ask, and we can talk about, you know, notional allocation to the two homes to achieve the greatest efficiencies, and then see what the province comes back with?
So, that's why, Mr. Warden, I talked about, about point of clarity. Motion to defer this to that working group doesn't lock us in anything, but it gives direction that we want feedback from that group, which we have in place.
Which is...
It doesn't tie us to what that right number is, but I think it gives, it gives direction that we're interested in a number that can come back, whether it's Ciena, because we know from May of 2018, a report came back supporting 28 beds for Rockwood. So, we know where there's a report there. All I'm saying is, is use that company, or whoever we used, through the working group to come back with that number. I think sending this back to that committee gives direction that we're interested in beds. And I think from, from Mr., from my representative from own town, Mr. Boddy, Counselor Boddy said that we realized, and we talked about this the other day at our education session, to carry on, which we have supported now at Gray Gables, we know we have to look at efficiencies and numbers are about efficiencies. So, I feel by deferring this to the committee gives that direction that we're looking for. What is that right number?
So, Counselor McQueen, I think you're echoing the comments of Counselor, Counselor...
But the motion isn't clear, because right now it's just removing the clause.
I think Counselor Mackey, you had, no. Burley, it's Counselor Burley that had mentioned pretty much the same thing, correct? Okay, Counselor Desai, and then I'm coming to you, Counselor Boddy.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Well, my initial question was whether we were debating the amendment or the motion itself, but that's been answered. My question to you, Mr. Warden, is, is it possible for me to ask for a recess so that council can come back with a more clear, can work with staff to come back with a more clear motion that addresses the concerns that we've heard around this table so far? And so that we can present a more clear motion that directs, that gives staff the direction that they're looking for, as well as assuages the concerns that councillors have around this table with regards to the allocation of the bed, and whether it goes back to the committee or not?
That might be appropriate, but let's hear from Counselor Boddy first.
I don't have to say it, because it's like ventriloquism.
That's what I thought of the fact that...
There's a little cash sitting on my knee. I'm just thinking this through. I think we've got a consensus around the table that we're going to need to have more beds to make this work. The exact number where, maybe should go back to the committee. The exact number of how many to get there maybe still needs to be decided. Maybe we shouldn't be deciding the exact amounts we're applying for. So, maybe we do stand it down for a few minutes, do a, you know, whereas council is in agreement that we're applying for new beds, we want the, send it back, the committee to recommend to council the number of beds and where, or something to that effect would maybe get us there versus moving ahead with this motion.
So, with everyone's leave, then, I would propose that we have a 10-minute recess.
So, point of order, could we ask that the mover and seconder withdraw that motion? Because right now we have that motion on the floor.
I think we'll get to that when we, when we come back from the recess. Okay? So, we're recessed for 10 minutes. Take their seats. Okay. So, we have a quorum. I'm going to turn things over to the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just in discussing and hearing the comments from council members, if they are looking for a broader application for long-term care beds, then staff have drafted a resolution for council's consideration. What would need to happen if council wishes to go that way is for the amendment to be withdrawn, and the original motion to either be withdrawn or voted down. That is up to council to decide that, and we would bring forward then another motion, a general motion that staff apply for 90 new long-term care beds to be allocated appropriately across Gray County Long-Term Care Homes. So, I will turn it back to Warden Hicks, and council can decide which route they would wish to go.
Counselor McQueen?
Certainly, procedurally, you're just having this discussion right now, because I know there is a motion on the floor. I would certainly move... I'll stand up as the warden suggests. I certainly would support the amended motion, but I would add a small, a small little caveat, that possibly minimum, and the reason why I say minimum is just sense of...
We need to deal with the motion, the amendment first?
Yeah, and then the main motion. Okay, so then I think Counselor Bartnicki, you were, were you the one to move the amendment?
I'm willing to withdraw the amendment.
And the seconder for that motion was who?
Counselor Millen.
Counselor Millen, are you in agreement with the withdrawal?
Sure.
Such enthusiasm on that. Okay, so that's withdrawal. We're back now to the main motion, which I, was not Counselor McQueen, who was it? I believe that was...
Robinson and Bartnicki? Yes, Robinson and Bartnicki.
On the main motion, so the two options are, you withdraw, or we leave it in place and vote. It would have to be defeated before we could proceed to the amended motion.
Yes, through you, Warden Hicks, I am prepared to withdraw the motion.
And Counselor Bartnicki?
Yes, I withdraw.
Okay, so that's withdrawn. We now can entertain a new motion, and Counselor McQueen, this would be the time that you can talk about... Well, except I think he's, well, do we need to move it if he's going to? Then we'll put it as is. I'll get a mover, Counselor Burley, seconded by Counselor Mackey, and it's on the floor. So, Counselor McQueen?
Certainly, I guess the underlying thing is, is we need, through this motion, is to give direction of us moving forward. We do need to give direction. And that direction, as I read it again here, Gray County Council requests that staff apply for 90 additional, 90, additional 90 new long-term care beds to be allocated within Gray County Long-Term Care. It doesn't say about sending it back to the committee. So, you're saying is, is we just make that application, and then we work on the details from that. So, like, so the idea is just that that would get it in the queue, that we're applying for 90, but that those details would be at the committee level. But this gets it in the queue that it goes to the province, we're asking for 90 new beds. Okay, thank you.
Sort of word "new" would be removed. So, the motion reads, Gray County Council requests that staff apply for an additional 90 long-term care beds to be allocated appropriately within Gray County Long-Term Care Homes from the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care. That's the way the motion reads right now. Counselor Burley?
I moved the motion, and I'd support it, but it just doesn't seem to be quite finished. Before staff apply for the 90 beds, I really feel it should go back to the Long-Term Care Committee first to have a discussion, to give staff more direction of how we should proceed. Does that make sense?
Good. If I may, through you, Mr. Warden. Gray County Council requests that the Long-Term Care Committee of Management prepare an application to the province for... Is that what you're looking for, is that there's, the Long-Term Care Committee of Management is going to work with us as staff to prepare that request? And the business case, essentially, to move forward with an additional 90 beds?
I agree with that, but see, my biggest problem is, there's so many different things that affect this applying for 90 beds. It's not just applying for the beds, there's a lot of other things that goes along with it. For instance, how do you staff these people, these 90 new beds, and so on and so forth? We need to have that discussion first.
If I may, I, I think that there's a place to, what I've heard people say around the table, is that there is a place for having a conversation with the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care at this time with regard to what they might be willing to support. And with an indication from the Ministry of what they might be willing to support, we know what that number is likely to be, then I think it would be time well spent to really invest in looking at the details about how best to allocate those beds and how to use them most efficiently.
Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I support the notion of applying for the additional beds, but I'm just wondering, in the interest of everybody knowing what the implications are, budget-wise and otherwise, on these 90 beds, would it be appropriate to have, defer this to the committee? I look at Mr. Burley, because I believe you're chair of that committee now, are you, the management committee? Yes. Defer this to the committee for a report back to council on the implications of the additional 90 beds, and where they might go, what the budget implications are, regardless, like I said, of the other implications. There's staffing, and it goes on and on and on, but the budget is the part. We saw numbers yesterday, or on Tuesday, rather, on what long-term care costs the taxpayer of this county. I'm concerned that if we simply just throw it out there, it's like throwing your line out into the lake, and asking for 90 beds, be careful what you ask for. It will not be... It will not be cheap. But that said, we've agreed to go with the three homes, that's fine, we need to make them efficient. If the Board of Management, or the Management Committee rather, can show that the 90 beds are sustainable for the taxpayer and are valued by the community, then have at it. But I'm not comfortable supporting this without knowing what are the implications of what those 90 beds will mean to this county.
So, Counselor Millen, you have two options. One, you can vote against the motion as it reads right now, or you can motion to amend it or defer it.
Well, I will, I will say, Mr. Warden, that I will not support it as it is currently on the board.
Counselor McQueen.
Well, I think certainly Counselor Millen raises some interesting points. The one is, is we learned on Tuesday that increasing the numbers does add efficiency. We saw the report back from Sienna back in, in May of 2018, by increasing the redevelopment of Rockwood from 100 to 128, had a ballpark figure of, of a million-dollar savings. So, certainly the question did come up on Tuesday, well, wouldn't that make sense to expand Gray Gables to, to create those efficiencies? So, I, I look at the motion, Mr. Warden, and I look at, it's sort of, it, it needs to be a little bit further followed through. One is, when I introduced the notice of motion of 90, I only based that on discussion that had happened. And that's why I put in the original one, a minimum, because I don't have, I don't have the, the understanding of what that perfect number is. And that we have, like, as the Sienna report came forward, the 128 was the best efficiency number that makes that work. And I think, I agree with Counselor Millen, we want to be the best, most efficient for our taxpayers that are here. But saying that, we have the opportunity, so let's, let's look at supporting this in principle. So, why not say, Gray County Council requests that staff apply or support in principle an additional 90, 90 long-term care beds to be allocated within Gray County, and further, further that a report comes back from the committee of how best we go ahead and applying or something along that line. So, we're following through, we're giving direction to the committee, that's why we have the committee there. That's how the committee worked last time. It came through that committee from the 128 beds, and I look at the chair. That's how that came forward, it came forward that way. Why not use that committee? They have the ability to work with Sienna, and, and, and we know we've got enough information about Gray Gables, so let's do it right. And part of that minimum, I say minimum of 90, let's have those conversations with the ministry. Let's look at when we apply for beds. Can we apply for a certain sector for memory care or for, for, I can't use, I don't know the word, the terminology, where you need to isolate certain patients and stuff like that? But let's look at the right model, let's work with the province, let's work with the Ministry of Health and, and get it right. So, we get it right for the next 10 to 20 years. And, and we know that, just as, as aside from, from our local MPP, he's prepared to go to bat for us, for those beds. So, let's all work together and get it right.
I'm gonna allow you to speak in a second, Kim, but it sounds to me like, again, you, you might be supportive of a motion to defer, to allow it to go to the Long-Term Care Management Committee and come back with a, a report and recommendation.
Let's, let's give direction that we support this in principle and give that back to the committee to, to further bring back a report of how best, or, you know, the, and, and I would think part of that, you would have conversations with the ministry of how best to do that.
That certainly can happen. Kim?
Through you, Mr. Warden, I would suggest if, if council's wish is that we really work through detailed scenarios with regard to the, the utilization and allocation of 90 new beds, then we will need to bring back a report looking to, I think, we'll either have to RFP or something to develop that, that will have to be a project. That, that work would be outside of the scope of our current contract with Sienna. So, we'd need to make sure if, if we were going to extend their work, that they were, had the capacity to take that additional work on, or if we would need to go to another consultant. But I think if we, if we want to look at this, we will need some additional resources, and I'd want to bring back a, a bit of a project plan and a, and a cost on, on that and some timelines so that everybody was aware. And then that resource could work with the Committee of Management.
So, point of clarity, Mr. Warden, when we got the 128 bed report, how did that process work? Because obviously you got that from Sienna. I, I think, I think we have to, there's, there's certainly, I'm gonna build a house, and I gotta go get the building permit, but then I gotta get the details of how I'm gonna build a house. I think at the point, we're at the point of thinking about buying that house or building that house. So, what is that right size of that house? So, certainly, I think, Madam CEO, to get into the details of what that looks like, but I don't know, I, I guess I asked for clarity of, how did we get the report for Sienna for the 128? Did we, like, how did that come up? Because obviously, that report's sitting on, on, on the table already. Like, I mean, we have half, maybe we have half that already got. We just need them to look at Gray Gables, and to be fair, you know, the home, and also, I think we, we don't want to miss the opportunity to look at the home here in Owensown also, right? I, I think this is a good part of looking at it in the big picture. But can we do it in a preliminary part that there's, we have lots of data, Sienna has lots of data, there's lots of data out there. Can we not just come back and maybe, maybe what you're saying, Madam CEO, is what needs to happen? Well, let's take it back to the committee, let's give them direction, then a subsequent report comes back like you're saying, because, because we've got to move on today, because there's other business to deal with today. Let's give the committee a direction, look at what the right number is, and then they come back. That's why we have the committee in place.
Okay, so, again, I think if I can summarize, what you're saying is that we're either deferring or we're supporting in principle and allowing the committee to come back with some sort of a recommendation. Counselor Desai.
You need an amendment to support that in principle and move that, move that motion to amend it.
Mr. Warden?
So, hold, just one second. So, if, if indeed we are proceeding with an amendment, I think we should put that on the table and discuss that. So, either we're proceeding with an amendment of the motion before us, or we're debating the motion before us.
So, my amendment would be that Gray County Council requests the, what's the name of the committee? How do you work, what's the...
Long-Term Care Management.
Committee of Management.
Committee of Management.
That management committee look at what is the number, or, so, the Gray County Council requests that the committee management, the Long-Term Care...
Yeah.
Investigates...
Or consider the impact.
Consider, consider the addition of a minimum of 90, 90 long-term care beds to be allocated appropriately in Gray County Long-Term Care Homes, from the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care. And that a report come back to County Council soon. Soon, I don't know how you word that, but, but that gives us direction to the committee, and they do the work, and they come back with a report. Maybe that's what it, it comes back, and that staff report back to County Council.
Okay, so let's just make sure we get that language, we're, we're taking a stab at draft here.
County Council requests that the committee management consider the addition of a minimum of 90 long-term care beds to be allocated appropriately within Gray County Long-Term Care Homes.
And that a count, a staff report come back to County Council for consideration. Is it a staff report or is it a report from the Management Committee?
Although, right, of proper allocation or something like that.
So, it'd be a report coming back, obviously prepared by staff. Just that, a report, why don't we just say, and that a report come back to County Council for consideration? Would you be satisfied with that?
It was an update report or an update is.
Yeah, okay, so...
Give direction to that committee, Mr. Warden.
Let's just get clarity here, I'm gonna read it through once more. That Gray County Council requests that the Committee of Management consider the addition of a minimum of 90 long-term care beds to be allocated appropriately within Gray County Long-Term Care Homes, and, and I'll speak to that in a second again, and further, that a report come back to County Council for consideration. The piece that I, I caution about is we do, and we learned at the session the other day, currently have a motion in place that says that we support long-term care, additional long-term care beds in the county of Gray for the private sector. If this motion reads that we are simply pushing for Gray County Long-Term Care, I wonder if it conflicts at all with that motion that's currently in place. But I leave that. If you're satisfied with this language, you can do that, or?
We need a secondor.
We would need a secondor. Counselor Desai. Okay, so, my list is, Counselor Desai, you are next.
Finally. Thank you, Mr. Warden, for recognizing me and allowing me to speak. My, I have a question of clarity with the, with the amendment at this point, as well as, I'd also like to respond to Counselor Mill, when he said that he'd like to know what the budget implications would be of, of the additional 90 beds. I, I don't think staff can at this point really say what the, because we're not guaranteed the 90 beds that we're requesting, so staff can't really give us budget implications unless they've got a crystal ball, which, you know, I, I feel they should share that information with us if they do. So, I, I don't think it's, it's fair of us to ask staff for budget implications when we don't know how many beds we will be getting. My second question of clarity with regards to the amendment is, how long do we expect the Long-Term Care Committee will take? Because we have to remember, 2025 is not far away, it's closer to being half a decade away than being a decade away. So, we need to act quick so, so as to avoid losing the beds and the facility at Rockwood terraces. So, through you, Mr. Warden, to staff, how long do we expect the Long-Term Care Management Committee to take and come back before us? And is, is this something, is, is direction to staff something we should be giving today with regards to applying for more beds?
Kim?
I, I think your last point, Counselor Desai, is well taken. Again, are we wanting to determine whether or not the province is amenable to additional beds and then do the work? Or do we want to do some significant work and then make application for the beds based on, on that information? It will be very, I think it will be quite challenging to come up with a detailed analysis of what 90 beds could mean and all the multiple scenarios that that might work out, but certainly we would give it our very best efforts to determine, you know, work with the committee members to come up with something with a set of scenarios that seems reasonable and put those numbers together. But there are just, you know, so many different permutations that it, it could be quite a lengthy project, and I'm hearing the conversation around the table, you want to move forward. So, I think, again, we would be taking our professional expertise and our best information and trying to put something together for you in a timely fashion. I just did want to be very clear that this kind of work, we would want to turn to our, our resources at Sienna or elsewhere to ensure that the information that we brought back to you was as, as complete and up-to-date and current as it could be.
Counselor O'Leary.
I just want to, thanks, Warden Hicks, I just want to make the point of perception that if we delay on our decision of, of asking for beds today, we're sending the message that we're not sure. So, I just want to make that point, that that decision has to be made today just because of that.
Thank you. Counselor Bart Nicky?
I think timing is optimal, and we're talking about what comes first, the chicken or the egg here. And Counselor Desai, I'm a math teacher, and your math is really off on a decade, 25 minus 19. We'll talk later. I am wondering whether Counselor McQueen and, and Counselor Desai would consider amendment, and I have wording here. Gray County Council requests that staff apply to the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care for a minimum of 90 additional long-term beds, and that upon notice of approval, to refer to the Long-Term Care Management Team to determine optimal efficiency, financial impact, and equity across Gray County.
Okay, well, let's get that. I'm just gonna capture it, you're wanting to second that, I'm gathering, okay. So, if you could, Counselor Bart Nicky?
Read it again?
Yeah. You've written it down, so, we'll try to get that into the record so everyone can see it. So, this is an amendment to the amendment.
It is. Which, I, I suppose we have to withdraw one?
No, you, yeah. We'll deal with yours first, and if it's defeated, then we would go to the other, yes. Just give us a second to get that, get that in.
Should be direct staff, right? Instead of request that, should be direct staff. Go ahead and do that. There's no work to be done. We don't want our staff spending time.
Perfect, okay. All right, so I'm, I'm gonna read that out loud so everyone has it clearly. The motion, or the amended motion now reads that Gray County Council requests that staff apply to the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care for a minimum of 90 additional long-term care beds, and that upon notice of approval, to refer to the Long-Term Care Committee of Management to determine optimal efficiency, financial impact, and equity across Gray County. Okay? And that was moved by Counselor Bart Nicky and seconded by Counselor Mill. So, on that now, we will have, sorry, discussion. Okay, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Math was never my strong suit in school, but I, I rechecked, my exact words were 2025 is closer to being half a decade away than it is to being a decade away. Six years away is closer to being... Mill, don't make me come after you.
All right, continue.
Thank you. My, my question, Mr. Warden, through you to staff, is do we, do we need to address in, within the motion that we're applying for 90 beds for Gray County-owned and operated homes, not for additional beds within Gray County Long-Term Care?
I think that's where the, the bottom part of the motion talks about, if there is approval, then the Long-Term Care Management Committee is going to look at that. I, I think it speaks to it.
We could only apply for our own beds.
Okay. So, sorry, Burley is next, Counselor Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, I'm just curious, Mr. Warden, the county at present time have a application in for 166-bed license at the province. Now, we're changing our mind and putting 90, is it gonna be confusing on the ministry's part, or does this cancel out the first one?
I would suggest that what we want to do with, the way we left things with the province was that we have an application in for redevelopment. That application is essentially in abeyance. I think we want to have the conversation with the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care. We do have a delegation at Roma next week with the Ministry of Health, that would be a place to at least initiate that conversation and take some direction from the province with regard to how best to move forward. I would take from that conversation and from them about whether or not there was a parallel track that we could pursue, or whether they would actually be expecting us to formally withdraw the application that's before them in order to move this one forward. So, I'll be looking for that kind of direction from the province next week.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this amended motion? Counselor Desai?
Questions through you to staff, or to you. If, if Counselor McQueen and I were to resent, or...
in.
Okay. Have we had enough discussion? Can I call the question? All those in favor of the motion? Are there any opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Okay, so... Yes. Counselor McQueen, would you then be withdrawing?
I'm prepared, and you can hear from him too, but I'm prepared to withdraw the first amendment motion.
And Counselor Desai?
I'll withdraw the first amendment.
Thank you. All right. Can we move on? We've got people waiting to do delegations, perhaps. I'm going to suggest, like, stay in your seats a short two-minute, because I anticipate some people may want to leave, others may want to come in. Yes?
Do we still have to vote on the original motion, or was that replaced?
So we amended that first motion, so we'll just note that. Thank you.
Okay. So give people a chance. If you are intending to leave, now would be the time. If we have delegations, they can come forward. Okay, we're moving on. We're on to item number four, delegations. Steve Furnas and Jacinda Rudolph and Philly Markowitz. Sorry, just one second. I would just ask that the room be cleared. If you can carry on your conversation outside, that would help. Thank you. Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just for clarity, when we were, you know, we certainly voted on the last motion, did the two previous motions both get withdrawn, or did only one get withdrawn?
The First Amendment got withdrawn by Counselors McQueen and Desai. And the Second, or the main motion, we took the liberty of adding a clause to the Second Amendment to say that the main motion be amended to state and then exactly what council has.
All right. The law of manipurk is satisfied that we've got it where we want it. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Steve.
Mr. Warden, counsel, staff. I'm Steve Furnas. I'm the acting manager of economic development. The real manager, Savannah Myers, will be coming back shortly when she's done increasing the population for Gray County. So she's doing a great job. We want more, so anyway, Savannah will be back shortly and still stays very well-connected. So just want to introduce our team. Jacinda Rudolph. Jacinda is working with our retention and marketing. Philly Markowitz, so ag specialist. Courtney Miller. Courtney, are you still here? Courtney's in the back. She's a manager of Enterprise Center. And Taylor Corfield is also with the Enterprise Center. So we're all here to help work with you and your staff. And I'll just have Jacinda now start with a lot of activity that's happening real quickly.
Good morning, everyone. So, he is so low. Yesterday, I was at a meeting with the Excellence in Manufacturing Consortium. They had a meeting there, and the first thing that the director had mentioned was their top issue that they have in manufacturing is skills and labor shortages. So above all issues, that was one of the top ones. So this further emphasizes the need for the job fair that we will be hosting. As Economic Development Department, hosting a job fair is one of the initiatives that allows us to help our local employers to continue to be productive contributors to our economy. So in partnership with the City of Owen Sound, YMCA, Georgian College, and Four County Labor Market Playing Board, we'll be hosting a job fair on February 21st here at the Bay Shore Community Center in Owen Sound from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. This job fair is, I believe, the sixth annual job fair that has been hosted here. We chose the week so that we can encourage post-secondary students to attend, because it is during their reading week. We're marketing to our region and outside of our region to attract more people to this area. I would encourage, if you have any employers within your municipality, to get signed up, because over the next three weeks, we'll be promoting the event to job seekers. So in that sense, we're able to promote some of the employers that will be present at the job fair. We're also trying to work with our municipalities, member municipalities, to get transportation, at least one transportation route down the main highways within Gray County. And so far, we have quite a few large players that have registered, which include McLean's Engineering, Owen Sound, Ledge Rock. We have Blue Mountain Resort, Vikings. We also have both of the school boards. We have about eight of the Bruce Power Suppliers that will be attending. Chapman's Ice Cream, and many more, and Gray Bruce Health Services as well. So some large players there, which will get many job seekers out and also be able to help the smaller employers who are looking for, you know, just a few positions for their business. So we also have, to complement the job fair, we have organized a bus tour. So in partnership with the Rural Employment Initiative, we have a bus tour coming. And the clients that are coming are individuals who currently live in GTA and looking to move to our rural communities. And so far, we have about 21 people registered. Their skills, essentially, they vary from accountants to IT professionals to project coordinators. And what we're going to do is we're going to, you know, show them the area, bring them up here, give them some food, and then introduce them to some of the employers at the job fair and give them the opportunity to network. So we did that last year. And this year, we're doing a little bit different. We're going to market to three different audiences or interest groups. The first one are individuals who are looking to get a job in this area. The other ones are individuals who are looking to start a business or invest. And then the third group are individuals that are looking to purchase or share land. And I will pass it on to Philly to talk about the third poster, which complements this Rural Opportunities Bus Tour. Philly?
Thank you, Jacinda. And through you, Warden, I'm happy to talk about this event. I'm very excited about this. So what we're going to do, and this is a first-time event, is bring together people who have available but underutilized farmland with people who are seeking opportunities in Gray County. There are a number of reasons why access to farmland is difficult for new entrants into farming and young entrants into farming. We've got consolidation, and we've got land prices going up across the county. And we have a number of smaller farms being essentially taken out of commission by new owners who might, for the most part, be ex-urbanite, who don't know enough about farming to make connections in the local community. So what we have done is engaged an organization called Farm Link that specifically does work to find land for new farmers, work with farms in succession, work with farm operations that are looking to hire people, looking to learn about farming, and connect those people together. So they are creating for Gray County a special program that is going to allow our local landowners to connect with land seekers who might be from here or away. And this is where it dovetails very well with the bus tour from Peel, is we're looking to attract people who are either in the GTA, the 905, or in Farm Link's catchment area. On their website, they have hundreds of people who are looking actively for farmland. So right now, we've got about a dozen people registered. The event is four weeks out, and it's a -- we've got interest from seven local landowners to share their land. They have plots anywhere from 1 to 65 acres available, and they're interested in everything from pastured poultry to hay and other forage, but are also welcoming things like CSA farms and greenhouses. And Jacinda has informed me that there are four people from Peel who are interested in coming up, and we do have a local land seeker as well. So we're really looking forward to having Farm Link get the word out there in their circles and bringing people from, we hope, across the province who want to bring farm-based businesses to incubate and hopefully stay here in Gray County.
All right. Thank you, Philly.
The last slide that's related to Labor Pool is an event that we've organized with OCNI, which is the Provincial Organization for Nuclear Suppliers. The goal here is to get as many nuclear suppliers to Georgian College and to see Gray County. You'll notice that we don't say Bruce Nuclear. It's, this association is right across, so in talking with them, there may be some nuclear suppliers that are looking to relocate. And the college seems to be very of a significant interest to a lot of suppliers. So this is an event, we were hoping to time this right after the job fair, but it just wasn't going to work. So it will happen, but it is in support of the Labor Pool and strengthening the college and our ability to hire and train our local residents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counsel, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My question through you to our staff is, if they've made an attempt to reach out to the increasing Mennonite population in the southern part of our county, we're increasingly seeing Mennonite communities moving into, at least, I know Southgate has a large population, and Gray Highlands has a large population. And the reason they're buying farms is to build small industrial buildings on them. My question through you is, if staff has made an attempt to reach out to this population to see if they would be willing to participate in the land-sharing opportunities by providing land to new farmers?
Is it Philly, or are you Steve?
You know, in general, we've worked with Glenn, your Economic Development Officer, to actually, you know, reach out and figure out how to communicate with that group. But I think that's a really good point in terms of the job fair. And I don't know about the land matching, but that actually would be a really good idea. I don't know, Philly, have you had any?
Well, my understanding of the community is that much of the land is used by the community itself, so it is unlikely, but we are doing our best. One of the partners that we have in terms of reaching out to landowners is RagBoss, so Real Estate Association of Gray Bruce Owen Sound. And they have distributed it to all their real estate agents, who are specifically looking to reach out to people who have purchased rural lands in the last two years. So they're forwarding it on so that people who aren't actively farming, that may include the Mennonite community, but that was my strategy around how to reach the landowners who might not be currently farming.
Counselor McQueen.
I'd like, Mr. Warden, to follow up from that. Thank you very much for the great things you guys are doing. With the job fair, with the Mennonite community, I know that they have all the shops, but they are always looking for people. They can't, you know, so I don't know if you've, Jacinda, have you plugged into that at all or whatever? And it's just sort of a takeaway, you know, in that part.
It sounds like you're talking a lot of market gardening or smaller plots. Is that sort of what you're looking for?
It may or may not be. I had a really extensive conversation with a cash cropper yesterday about whether there would be space for that. We are excluding no one, but we anticipate that it will be smaller lots of lands, because the larger farmers have pretty established networks with their neighbors for the most part, but nobody is excluded.
So two points. I know the many and looking to plan and trying to create some opportunities through that is always a positive thing. But also, from a large cash cropping operation, there's a lot of small areas that those 300-horsepower tractors can't get into.
Exactly.
Certainly, you could just follow through, and if it's a market gardening and people need that, you know, to capitalize on that. My other point is, on those lands from the farm tax rebate program, is there something that, through the province, that there's a, maybe there's something you need to follow up with the Agriculture Minister, to the ability that if people are allowing people to use this land, can they get a little bit of a tax break? So they have an incentive to. And it's only because of the tax, from tax rebate program.
That's one of the things that Farm Link will be covering. And I've also been speaking with the OFA about their extensive body of information around the tax rebates. So that information is going to be available to the participants. And also, OMAFRA has put together some really great resources around land leasing. So I'm hoping that the combined resources are really going to give people a good background.
So do we, as a county of Gray, have plots of land?
That'd be a Randy question.
You're thinking now, eh?
Ooh, wheels starting to turn. There has been, I know, and there has been, I mean, at the municipal level in certain municipalities, I know there have been conversations about land in common and potential for incubation, but I don't believe there's anything at the county level.
Okay, Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just to clarify, Steve, Glenn Walker is the Economic Development Officer in Southgate. But if Counselor Desai would like to fund part of his remuneration, we welcome the check.
Okay.
I would also add...
I was thinking we'd annex Southgate. It could do better with a better counsel.
I was thinking maybe it was another math impediment on your...
All right, all right, come on. Other questions?
Please take it outside.
Thank you very much. Thank you, folks. Okay, moving along. We're on to item number five, determination of items requiring separate discussion. We're looking at that list at number six. Is there anything that needs to be polled? Counselor Mill?
I'll move approval of the consent items as presented.
Thank you. And seconded by Counselor McQueen. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number seven. I guess it's that Randy item, right? Yeah, sorry, I need a... Thank you, Counselor Burley. Seconded by Counselor Clumpus. It's on the floor. Randy, you've got it.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. Ambry and I are going to tag-team this report. It's a combined report between housing and planning with respect to the proposed Housing Supply Action Plan that the province has put out for consultation. So Ontario is experiencing a housing shortage for not only low-income earners, but also middle income. This housing shortage broadly impacts everyone from young families just starting out to our seniors. Gray County, of course, has not been immune to these effects, as we too are experiencing housing shortages. As I mentioned, the province is developing a Housing Supply Action Plan to assist in increasing the supply of housing throughout Ontario, and by addressing some of the potential barriers that may exist for creating that housing. Province is asking for comments. The deadline is tomorrow. So that's, the report is very timely, and we're hoping that committee will support the comments that we've identified in the staff report and that we send those on to the province as part of the consultation. There are five broad themes in the consultation that focus on speed, the time it takes development projects to get approved, mix, too many restrictions for the right mix of housing, costs, being the development costs are too high, rent, it's too hard to be a landlord in Ontario and tendency to be protected, and innovation, other opportunities and innovation to increase housing supply. Staff saw feedback from nonprofit housing providers and missile planning staff in order to provide some of the comments that we've included in this report. Under those five themes, the province has identified a number of questions, and will provide a summary of the comments under each of those five themes. So the speed, in terms of how can we streamline development approval process while balancing competing interests and the public interest? County staff see the above two questions as two separate issues. First, how can we streamline the approvals process? And then the second is how do we balance competing interests and the broader public interest? With respect to how we can streamline the approvals process, that's where upper-tier and lower-tier municipalities can work to update their approvals process to ensure that applications are processed in an expedition manner, especially when affordable housing is being proposed. Provincial approvals and other agencies such as conservation authorities and the Norges Gardening Commission would also need to be considered here if the development process is truly to be streamlined. This would involve looking at the entire process and looking for opportunities to streamline and to eliminate any duplication and to eliminate any unnecessary process. Other phases of the development process can be difficult to expedite. We identified a couple where there's environmental or archaeological site work, which can only be undertaken in certain seasons based on provincial guidelines. We're looking at trying to provide some flexibility, especially on the archaeological studies as part of our process, recognizing that we have usually an extended long winter season, and it's difficult in some cases to do that field site work. Municipalities should ensure that their planning documents are kept up-to-date and to prioritize affordable rental and own housing. And this can be done through some of the things that we've talked about previously, looking at as-of-right permissions for secondary suites, no minimum dwelling unit size and zoning bylaws, appropriate development densities, and permitting a flexible range of unit types will all help towards removing... as part of our process, recognizing that we have usually an extended long winter season, and it's difficult in some cases to do that field site work. Municipalities should ensure that their planning documents are kept up to date and to prioritize affordable rental and own housing. And this can be done through some of the things that we've talked about previously, looking at as-of-right permissions for secondary suites, no minimum dwelling unit size and zoning bylaws, appropriate development densities, and permitting a flexible range of unit types will all help towards removing roadblocks to new housing. One area that we see a great potential is, and we've talked about it before, is offering incentives through a community improvement plan to encourage new rental units and to assist with, for example, the conversion of existing vacant buildings for affordable housing. We're bringing back the report on the Community Improvement Plan Program in February to council, and we're hoping that as part of the budget approval discussion too, for 2019, there will be a proposed budget for those CIP program. With respect to the second item, in terms of how do we balance competing interests and the broader public interest, this question may go beyond the abilities of municipal governance to answer or effect change. Of course, municipalities, we can ensure that our official plan designations and zoning is in place, which provide for a range of housing unit types that require higher or medium density of housing types. However, municipality has little direct effect over rental or selling prices. Ontario operates in a housing market that is primarily driven by private developers and dictated by the market. If a developer can buy land and develop houses which retail for a lower price versus developing those same lands with houses selling for a higher price while retaining greater profits, it's difficult to make the argument for the less expensive homes. Similar to the incentive to build new purpose-built multi-medium-density housing, rental housing, can be difficult, as developers have to upfront those costs in order to build that apartment building, for example, and then over time, they're recouping those costs over a longer period of investment. If developers have to choose between short-term versus long-term investments where recouping costs take much longer, often developers will move towards some of those short-term projects unless funding or other incentives are provided to help the developer to reduce those upfront costs and to help reduce their risk. Things like education for developers, the public and municipal councils could help bring awareness to the need and benefits for more affordable housing and the missing middle, although this may help to remove some of the stigma attached to affordable and attainable housing, unless the province or municipalities have more tools to make affordable housing more profitable or contribute more government funds, it may be tough to dramatically increase supply through new private development. On the second theme, in terms of the mix of housing, and that there's too many restrictions for the right mix of housing, similar to the first theme, many of these restrictions can be alleviated through up-to-date planning documents, ensuring age-friendly housing and quality public spaces are crucial to our population as they continue to age. Considering cultural differences of new Canadians will also be essential in meeting the needs of our communities moving forward. Things like intergenerational homes and more flexible definitions of what constitutes a dwelling unit could also aid in achieving a better mix of housing. Other homeownership types, including cooperative or co-share housing, should also be explored here. Other planning tools, as I mentioned, such as community improvement plans and inclusionary zoning can help incent a broader range of housing. It's caution, I guess, in terms of inclusionary zoning can also be administratively cumbersome to implement ministers, so that's something that municipalities need to consider if they're choosing that option or that tool to help provide more affordable housing. Another option is bonus zoning. It's basically, bonus zoning is essentially where you, development is allowed to increase in density or height in exchange for a community benefit, and that community benefit can be affordable housing. This can be units within the development itself, or land or cash and lieu provided, so that it can be used to develop affordable housing off-site. We also need to be strategic in terms of where we incent new housing and the types of housing that are promoted. The missing middle will be crucial to support and promote, and when we talk about missing middle, we're talking about the $40,000 to $100,000 income earners in terms of that missing middle housing, where people are challenged to find that attainable housing within that bracket. On the third theme, costs, development costs are too high because of land prices and government imposed fees and charges. So, this is always a tricky one. Development charges operate under the philosophy that growth should pay for growth, i.e. new growth should not trigger new costs to the existing tax base. As noted earlier, municipalities can look at things like a CIP, which looks at incenting certain types of housing. As part of a CIP, a municipality could look at deferring or rebating development charges, or they may choose to waive planning application fees for certain types of development, such as affordable housing. The costs of providing infrastructure on the flip side continues to rise. Some of these costs may be lessened by providing expedited provincial approvals, but the costs are still significant. Additional infrastructure money from senior levels of government could help reduce municipal costs, but staff recognize that the existing taxpayers cannot be overburdened across all levels of government. One area where we think there's great potential is to create more affordable housing is by implementing a housing-first policy for disposal of surplus lands across all levels of government. The recent example is the Durham project in, where we issued an RFP, we identified there was county surplus lands, and in the end, we're creating 14 new rental units on the market. I'll turn over to Anne Marie to talk about the next two themes.
The next theme that the province is looking at is rent. It is too hard to be a landlord in Ontario, and tenants need to be protected. How can the current system work better for landlords? Well, one of the barriers that we see is the landlord tribunal process. The landlord tribunal is actually one of eight social justice tribunals across Ontario. Human rights would be another one, so it falls under that umbrella, under this, under Social Justice Ontario. It can be confusing and hard to maneuver through it. There's lots of processes, paperwork, deadlines, so if you're a small landlord and you're not at the tribunal very often, it can often be a scary process. So, we're recommending a helpline for landlords, or at least some online resources, and a live body that you can talk to to ask those questions. That would certainly maybe take out some of the unknown factors of being a landlord and worrying about maybe some situations with a tenant that you need to rectify, such as arrears or other situations. Wait times, wait times are also a little bit of an issue right now. The landlord tribunal is under-resourced at the current moment. It is up to about four months now before you do get a hearing, and then it can even be a couple of months after that before you find out the results of the hearing if they're not determined at the tribunal. So, that just adds a little bit of stress as a landlord and certainly as a tenant, too, when it comes to getting those decisions in a timely manner. There currently are by phone and in-person supports for tenants that access services, and also financial assistance, and we're recommending that these do continue. The next question that they were looking under for rent is also looking at how do we encourage homeowners to create legal second suites? Again, it's that incentive, is there an incentive out there for a homeowner to do it? And also, looking at continuing the funding through the Ontario Renovates Program. That's a program under the Investment in Affordable Housing Program. It is funded by this current government until 2019, but beyond that, none of the service managers across Ontario know what to expect for funding, so the continuation of programs as such would be, would be a good, a good way to continue promoting that secondary suite. And also, maybe the province should investigate looking, things like laneway housing. This is housing that, putting a small home on an existing property, so using maybe that, where a garage might be, or is there access at the back of a property that a small home could be. Very popular in Vancouver right now, they actually have an entire program dedicated to laneway housing, and I know Toronto's looking at similar ways. The next question that the province wants to consult on is innovation. Are there other opportunities and innovative ways for creating a housing supply? The one thing that we identified is a cultural shift. There needs to be a redefinition, we have to redefine the way we look at our current homeownership, and that it should be a very large semi, or a large detached home on a large lot. That cultural shift needs to look and think about smaller units, rentals, shared accommodations, secondary suites, and make it that they are standard and that they're financially sound for builders to invest in. Ontario's not-for-profit sector is probably one of our natural partners. They are already in the business, they're already providing affordable housing, providing incentives, and also, again, probably some funding from the investment in affordable housing to continue. Funds like that certainly do prove that they do work in adding additional units. This is a program in which the county has been able to add 56 additional units for 2018 and 19. Co-sharing, which Randy mentioned before, is an alternative housing program. It doesn't necessarily work for everyone, it's probably a certain population at a certain time in their lives that it might work for, but certainly encouraging community agencies and entities maybe to get involved. One example would be students. So, for instance, a secondary, post-secondary education, they might link a student with a senior that has a room for rent, and that senior might get, you know, for reduced rent, they might have their driveway shoveled or their groceries brought in, that sort of thing. So, encouraging those partnerships. There are a few around, I know Halton has just started a co-share program, and I think they've had it for about a year and a half, and there's not a lot of take-up, and I think, again, it's because of that cultural shift that we need to see.
So, in the report, we also identified some county initiatives that we either have been completed or currently working on in order to help address some of the housing shortage that we're seeing across the county. The first one that we identified is the new county official plan, which we call Recolor Gray. Based on what we heard from the community about the need for affordable and attainable housing, we included some policies that we hope will help support and promote affordable housing going forward. These include promoting a mix and range of housing types across that housing spectrum, identifying density targets, again, recommending that minimum housing size restrictions and zoning bylaws be eliminated and just let the Ontario Building Code ride, establishing that housing-first policy whereby surplus county-owned lands will be utilized, and recommending that municipalities also consider the same housing-first policy approach, policies that support second units, as well as some tiny home policies, as well as policies around our community improvement plan. The next initiative that I already mentioned that we're working on is the Community Improvement Plan Program, and this is in partnership with our, with local municipalities, where we provide incentives for certain types of development, including affordable housing. And this would be offering up surplus land, offering permit and application fee exemptions or reductions, looking at development charge deferrals or exemptions, looking at things like a vacant land tax assistance grant, or a housing rehabilitation and conversion grant. For example, if we have an abandoned school, could we utilize that to offer up a grant program or some tax incentives if a developer were to develop those for affordable housing? There are some other programs that are under Anne Marie's umbrella that she would also like to highlight.
Just quickly, I did listen in the report, the rental build program that I spoke to with our 56 affordable and market units certainly has been a great benefit for us. We have a regeneration plan for some of our detached social housing units, homeownership, where we provide a 5% down payment. Rent supplements, rent supplements are a great way in which we provide a subsidy to the landlord to bridge that gap between what a person can afford and what the actual rent is, and also, just a little bit of a promotion for our tenure housing and homelessness plan consultation that we're under, is underway right now, and we're hoping to come with a report in May for that, too.
Thank you very much. Council Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. Thanks for the report, a lot of valuable information. Minister Clarke is coming up to a roundtable that I believe a number of us have been invited to. Wondering if briefing notes could be put together for our benefit that are attending that meeting? You know, if we could have some of the best practices that you've outlined in your report, I think would be really helpful, would be for me, and not sure about my colleagues, but...
If it would help, certainly we could repackage some of the information that's in here into that format of a delegation brief, the same as we use at the conferences. Is that, would that be helpful?
Certainly that would be helpful, and we could certainly pass that on then to the minister. I think it's at 5 o'clock on Saturday. Thank you.
Council Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Staff, I have a couple of questions. One of them was around municipalities requiring developers to build a certain percentage of their development as affordable units. A couple of solutions that were mentioned, one of them was inclusionary zoning and bonus zoning. I was, my question through you to our staff, Mr. Warden, is, does the county currently engage in either of these activities?
Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So, in our new official plan, we did identify policies that would support both of those initiatives. Both of those initiatives would be administered at the local municipal level, but with the policies that we included in the county official plan, that can at least be explored by local municipalities. With that, often there needs to be some policies in your local planning documents as well, so those have to also be updated in order to consider those. Both avenues can be considered. Inclusionary zoning, as I mentioned, there, we think there's some administration that comes along with that in terms of maintaining agreements. There's also a process where you have to do an assessment report in order to basically justify the need to do an inclusionary zoning. And inclusionary zoning, just to clarify, that's when you're setting out a percent for all new developments would have to be, contain affordable units. So, say, for example, municipality said, we want to see 20% of all new units be affordable, then that's what would have to be put in place for any new developments coming forward. With that, there's agreements that would have to be attached that to make sure that those units are kept at affordable levels over a period of time. And so, to maintain those agreements and to monitor to ensure that those units are kept affordable, there's some work there. But it is a tool that the province allows municipalities to consider. The other one is bonus zoning, as I mentioned, so this is where you allow to increase the height of a development or the density of development beyond what is currently permitted, say, in your zoning bylaw, in order for, in exchange for community benefits. And community benefits, like I said, could include affordable housing. So, for example, if a developer comes along, they want to build a three-story building, the municipality through bonus zoning could allow them to construct a four-story, for example, with the notion that maybe the, one of the stories contains affordable housing units. Or in exchange for land or cash and lieu of allowing them to put in a four-story, they could put some of that funding into affordable housing off-site somewhere else. So, that is an opportunity that municipalities also has. It's under Section 37 of the Planning Act, it allows municipalities to consider that. Again, you need implementing policies in your, your planning documents in order for you to consider that, but that definitely is an option. We see the bonus zoning as a bit more of a win-win situation, in that the developer in the end gets what they're originally proposing, plus maybe some additional units, and the community benefits by getting some affordable housing, whether it's in that development or off-site. So, those are the two areas definitely that can be explored further, implemented at the local municipal level.
Thank you. Council of Bart Nicky.
Whether bonusing or not is the name of the game. I think our biggest challenge as municipalities to anything that's, that looks like inclusionary, higher density, is nimbyism. Does your, does your submission in any way help us to deal with that somehow?
Through you, Mr. Warden, great question. And this is one of the challenges that, that barriers to affordable housing is that developers, they come across that nimbyism and are scared off in terms of looking at putting in some affordable housing units within any proposed development. One way we think to be able to address that is through some education awareness around the needs and benefits of affordable housing. This year, we're hoping to work with Rob Hatton, our communications specialist and other departments to try to create some education awareness, whether it be through videos or other avenues that we can share it through social media and share through other avenues, such as through real estate agents and others, to say, we need this housing, we need it in order to support our overall economy. We're hearing, of course, from employers that they can't find staff because there's no housing to staff, for their staff to live in, at an affordable rate. So, getting across that message to the overall general public, letting them aware of some of those challenges and why we need to have some of these affordable and attainable housing in our community is vitally important for the future of our, for our economy. And so, it's things like that, that through education awareness, we think we can start changing some of that culture shift that Anne Marie mentioned, but it takes a bit of time, right? So, with that, that's where we think making sure our planning documents are up to date, allowing for these things as-of-right permissions, it avoids then the opportunity for appeals to go through L-PAT process, because again, that lowers the risk for the developer. If they are permitted as-of-right, then, then there's, there's less risk there, because they don't have to go through an L-PAT process if it's appealed by, for example, a neighbor. So, it's things like that, that we think we can make some headway, but it'll be a bit of time and challenge in creating that awareness that we need these units.
Council Body.
Well, there's clearly an argument that we have a shortage of housing, and if you talk to the realtors and the needs, we do. Is that a conference? We're all at a conference, probably Good Roads, I don't remember which there is, an economist talking about housing. We also have a huge abundance of housing, if you break it down per bedroom. have a huge abundance of housing if you break it down per bedroom. Just doing in my head. My street, 18 houses, only four have got kids in them. The rest are a single widow, widower, or, or a couple. So like, there's 36 empty bedrooms right there. How do you get me out of my house so it frees it up for somebody that comes in that needs kids at an affordable rate? So it's the needing of that mid-house.
We can evict you if you'd like.
I'll sell you the house and you start having kids.
Your, your generation ruined the housing market for mine. I can't buy it.
When, when you get married, do the right thing.
All right. Back to the, back to the subject.
Oh, oh, sorry. I became his mother there for a minute. But, but there's an abundance of housing that we're not taking advantage of. My fear is in 10 or 15 years, we're going to build more houses and then go, oh crap, we've got too many houses. How are we going to sell these? The market's going to tank. It's going to be really affordable. We're trying to maybe solve the problem with instant problems or, or immediate problems with short-term gaps that doesn't look at the big picture. And that's part of it is finding the right housing for our gen, except him, our generation to move out of and, and free up for his generation, your generation.
I agree. And again, it's back to that concept that everybody needs a big house and they don't want to move into something smaller or share accommodation. One of the things that we've also recognized is that we do have a number of houses that are empty that landlords are not renting out also, for numerous reasons. And one of them is maybe that they just don't have the funds to make it into for separate units and it, and it's, and it's two, or they are two units and they need some rehab. They need to be some renovations. So maybe that's an area that we can look at helping out with. Is there the ability to do some landlord renovation program or even a pilot program just to see if we can increase some of those houses that are empty? And maybe that might spur somebody on to sell it too, or to, to renovate an apartment in the basement. So, but again, that all costs money and getting over that, you know, cultural shift that it's, it's okay to live with people. And I always say I have a front porch theory that we used to be, and I don't know about you, but when I grew up, we were all on our front porches. We knew what our neighbor needed. We knew that the house down there was one person in it and everybody needed something. I know I'm dating myself. There were front porches back then. But we're not that way anymore. We're in our big house in our backyard and we don't know what's going on in our neighborhoods. And we need to have that cultural shift back to our front porches again. That's my, my rant.
Counselor Soever, and then I believe Counselor Desai.
Yes, the, certainly the, the LPAT that you mentioned is, is the biggest issue, I think, that we face. So, you know, how can we make these things LPAT proof? Because we've seen that during the election, you know, everybody was for attainable housing. And then when you mention the site, all of a sudden they're talking about transportation and how we, we, we don't put it here, but we rather put it somewhere else than trans, use transportation to move people. So is there any way of doing that?
Through you, Ms. Warden. So there's, making sure our planning documents are up to date, what we call pre-zoning lands to allow for these developments to occur helps. There will always be applications and, and even, even if we pre-zone lands, and, and so there will always be potential opportunities for, for someone to appeal those. Without, I guess, legislation changes to prevent some of that to be appealed, then, you know, there's still that opportunity that will likely exist for, for any new developments. But for example, though, if we have some land in our settlement areas where we, we want to have apartments, rental, rental units, making sure that that property is zoned to allow for that to occur, then the developer's only dealing with a site plan. Site plans are limited in terms of their appeal rights. And usually, it's only the applicant that can, can appeal those. So it's things like that, that we need to look for and explore those opportunities further to, to make sure that we're pre-zoning those lands to allow these developments to occur. But if there, if there's a subdivision still involved, then that subdivision application could still be appealed, even if we pre-zone lands to allow for those things to occur. So the, the province has tried to make some changes to the LPAT process to make it more efficient. We're still figuring it out, the new process. Even as of the last pre-hearing that staff attended yesterday, the LPAT member and the lawyers were still trying to figure out the process and what rules apply. So it's going to take a bit of time to, to go through that process, but we hope there will be some efficiencies achieved through that new process over time.
Okay. Counselor Desai. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. I have two questions. So I, I, I understand what Counselor Body is addressing and with the issue of having those bedrooms. And one of the things that I think the report spoke to is promotion of co-share, co-share housing. My question through you, Mr. Warden, to our staff, is, is staff doing anything to promote the concept of co-share housing? I mean, we, we, we've seen that it's worked in places like the Netherlands where university students are being housed with, with seniors and it's a sort of a symbiotic relationship. So is staff, is staff undertaking any activities to promote this type of housing?
Thank you, Amberie.
So I can certainly speak to our consultation sessions that we've been having since October. It's definitely a concept and an idea that has come up and certainly will be part of our, our housing strategy moving forward. Definitely looking at post-secondary schools and, and that opportunity in our communities is, is something that we would, we would certainly, in the future, look to promoting.
Counselor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I just wonder if I could ask staff, something that I struggle with anyway, is sort of actually helping us as municipalities define what is affordable? I know for each of us, it's going to be different and that we'll have to make those decisions within, within our own areas. And I know through the workforce task force that it was suggested that 30% of a person's income would be the right number to be spent on housing. And I'm wondering if you feel that that's the number we should work with, or do you have any other, other advice for us as municipalities in determining what is affordable? Because I think if we have some sense of what those numbers are in terms of rent or cost of housing, that will help us to determine what incentives we need to offer to developers to reach, to reach those numbers.
Excellent question. Always a challenge in terms of what is that, that affordable housing? And that, that varies across, across Gray County in terms of each locality, that number is different. Right now, we, we have been updating those on a, on a five-year interval to get some of the data in order to update on annual basis. We're trying to explore that. But the, the provincial definition is that 30% in terms of the definition, the PPS for affordable housing. We also hear 80% of market rate is, is one that's also used in terms of what is an affordable housing level. So, so those are the things that we're working with in terms of those, those definitions or those, those numbers. But it changes on an annual basis, at least, in terms of what those affordable rates are. And so I think it's, it'd be important to work with our local municipalities to try to come up with a, some data that would help keep that number up to date so that we know, okay, this year, based on previous sales, here's what we're dealing with in terms of affordable housing rate, because it does change, change quite drastically for many given year in some cases.
If I just, I'll just add as well, I wondered about some, a discussion at the Economic Development Advisory Table. The new rules for mortgage lending and the stress testing that goes on, I, it wasn't, it's just something I'm not entirely clear about. If that, what impact that has on that 30% rule, or has that number shifted a little bit because of the fact that they're testing your income against potential future rate increases to mortgage rates? So something else to just investigate.
Go ahead, Amberie.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. To that, that is more for that middle income earner, that lower income earner, 30% doesn't even work. For instance, a senior on CPP and OAS and GI, Guaranteed Income Supplement, probably only makes about $1,200. So for them to be able to live on, you know, $400 a month or $300 a month, it, it isn't going to work. So there is that large part of our population too, that even that 30% rule doesn't work for. And that would be anybody on disability, pretty much anybody who lives with, with us. And we have 997 and a waitlist. So I think that there's affordable and then there's the need for subsidy, subsidized housing, too.
Ms. Feedy, anything to add from the poverty perspective?
So, thank you, Mr. Warden. I would add that even with the numbers Amberie's speaking to, we have a population that lives as a single person with under $800 a month. So that has to include all of, everything that they can spend, their shelter, food, transportation. So we're not touching any of those with this kind of policy. But we certainly, should we be able to free up some other space and people move, that transgression will open up some of those other opportunities as well in smaller units.
Okay. Are we, Counselor Desai?
One of, one of my questions was around development charges of secondary units. And staff responded that there was, there's changes that are expected to come around April or March slash April of this year from the province. My question through Mr. Warden to staff is, do we know what, what, do we know any changes that are coming through? Do we know of any changes that are being discussed and that we can expect to come through from this? And what is the timeline around revisiting our own development charges by law, once we know what's coming down from the province?
Randy?
Great questions. With respect to what may be coming in terms of changes to Development Charges Act, we're not sure at this stage. We do think that based on their consultations on this Housing Supply Action Plan, we think that there could be some changes to Development Charges Act to exempt maybe affordable housing or second units or something to that effect, but we're not sure at this stage. So that's where we've been looking at the potential to update our development charges by law, to maybe look at exempting some further affordable housing units, like second units. Right now, our development charge by law exempts second units that are within or attached to an existing dwelling. So some of the things that we may be able to explore, subject to council's approval, is exempting on detached second units. Exempting second units that are being proposed at the original building permit of the original unit. For example, if a single attached home is being built, being applied for, and they want to put in a second unit right, right off the, the bat, then exempting that, that second unit as part of that up, original application. Another area that we're potentially exploring is exempting any affordable housing units that are built by nonprofit housing groups and, and as well as any, where provincial funds through our housing department are provided, exempting those, those units as well. So those are some of the things that we're looking at. Right now, we've been told by our development charge consultants to maybe hold off because there is quite a process you have to go through to update your development charge by law. You have to put out your, your proposed amendment within so many days prior to having your public meeting, et cetera. So until we see the provincial changes, there, we don't want to restart the process, so to speak. So we're, we're hoping that we'll have some, some provincial changes in March, April, and then bringing forward hopefully shortly thereafter, any proposed changes to our development charge by law to, to help address some of the affordable housing challenges.
Okay. Counselor McQueen.
So to me, it looks like a bit of a technicality. So you, you have a development charge on the main unit. And your main unit is a, is a single-family dwelling or however the unit described in your Development Charge Act. But you can't build two single-family dwellings on one property. My point is, from a technicality part, I, to me, it looks like it's, the secondary unit is only there because of the main unit. And so you're, you're, and, and from descriptive wise, it's secondary two. But if it's secondary two and your, and your main unit is, is where you're applying for the development charge, to me, it's only on that main part. I know it sounds like a technicality. So moving forward, Mr. Warden, if there are those that come forward and are doing a secondary dwelling, can they make application to us as county council to, to be subsidized or until we get some idea where that is? Because I know we've done it in other sectors. I'm just thinking that if there are, not to hold people back, and we've had conversations with the Home Builders Association that there's, they want to get moving, can they come, what's the process in the sense of sort of setting that aside or getting exemption? Or we pull it out of somewhere else and, and cover that cost of that development charge so people can move forward?
You could do the grant in lieu that we, we have done for the nonprofits and stuff. That, those, that'd be an application. Otherwise, you know, staff should be following the by law. And the by law reads that, no, it's, it's a separate, charge. But we were cautioned by the consultant as well that you want to be, you got to be careful in this because there has been reasons in the province that that's been taken advantage of when they opened those avenues. So we have to do our homework and make sure it was well played out, the rules and stuff. Because you open up the door and then what you weren't intending sure happened, but everything else happened that you weren't intending. So it's not, it's not impossible. But again, on the one offs, if you wanted to right now, they could come before the council and then, you know, we could fund that. And we'd have to try to keep that development charge reserve whole like we've done for Amberie's.
So, Mr. Warden, just a subsequent to that, can we, these communicate that that's an option for people? Because I think then at least that they know it's their option, they can move forward because maybe there's a reason for a young family of their family or a senior person or whatever the reason. Because it sounds like there's, there's some in the queue that are sort of holding back and waiting, waiting. Sometimes they can't wait.
Yeah, for sure. We can, we can definitely add that to our, to our communication to, is that avenue, if they want to explore that option, for sure.
Okay. Counselor Keveney and then Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We know that the province has been, I'm going to say, strongly encouraging infill projects. Do we suspect through the recognition of now of the obvious need for more affordable housing, that the province may be more flexible in that requirement that has been in existence?
Good question. I'm, I'm not aware if, if the province will be exploring that. I think right now they're looking for all comments and opportunities in terms, in terms of trying to increase the overall housing supply. So that may be an avenue that they, they explore further in terms of that piece, in terms of infill opportunities. In our, in our official plan, infill opportunities are, especially in our primary settlement areas and, and other settlement areas, we encourage those to be explored because we think there's, there's opportunities there for underutilized pieces of land or, or where you could maybe add in further units on a larger lot, for example. We think there's opportunities that should be explored.
Thank you. Counselor Mackey.
Thank you, Warden. And through you to Randy. You mentioned tiny houses, Randy. So from a, a building code standpoint and from a planning department standpoint, is there a minimum size that you would be encouraging us to look at? I think in the township of Chautauqua right now, it's a thousand square feet, but that certainly could be reduced. But do you know what that number could go down to and what should be encouraged?
We've heard it's, it's, can be quite low in terms of the entire billing code. And so what we're suggesting is to eliminate that minimum housing size in our zoning bylaws and let, I guess, innovation come forward through, through design to make sure that, of course, you need to make sure the, the house, housing unit is, is still safe and, and can provide the, the necessities. But it's, we didn't, we actually at one point included a, a number in the official plan, but that was even recommended to be removed by the province because let's just let the entire billing code dictate, as well as design to dictate how small we can go. So, you know, we're hearing that some units, 300 square feet, 400 square feet is, is reasonable. Maybe it needs to be higher in that in here in terms of our, some of our climate challenges and other things. But yeah, let's let, I guess, innovation dictate or design dictate how small we can go and that is still marketable and still livable and safe. Yeah, I don't know if that's, helps answer that question.
We certainly know that people are living in common millions.
Yes. Exactly. Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. I think we've had a very good discussion. I don't want to limit discussion, but it's an important topic. But we do need to move on. So if you're okay with that, I'll call the question on the motion. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much. We are aiming to break at 12:30. Does anyone need a short break? There'll be another 20 minutes or so. We'll move on. Yes?
Could I just ask, as far as the, the briefing, the, the delegation note for the me- Could I just ask, as far as the briefing, the delegation note for the meeting with Minister Walker, et cetera, on Saturday, does everybody just want to see that? Will he just circulate that to everyone?
Yes.
Is that fine? Okay.
Good. Okay. Moving on to 7B. We're going to the great land of Gray Highlands. Yes, Counselor Desai, you're moving. And seconded by Counselor McQueen, Scott, the floor.
So, thank you, Warden Hicks and members of council. I guess I drew a fairly favorable time slot here to bring forward our residential plan of subdivision that's recommending approval of some townhouses, so I'll just get on with it. What we have here is, is a proposed infill project in, in, in Markdale. The lands are 2.75 hectares in size. And what they're proposing through this plan of subdivision is to create eight blocks, which would ultimately be used to create 54 new townhome units. As you can see from the air photo, the lands are surrounded by development on side, on, on all sides. Primarily residential, but to the, the north, we have the golf course and the curling club. To the southeast, we have the arena and the Ball Diamonds. And, and to the southwest, we have some of our county housing units, as well as the police station there. This particular development is known as Stone Brook Phase Three. For some of you that were on council last term, you will remember Stone Brook Phase One and Two. But for those that weren't, I'll just give you a quick synopsis. This is the proposed plan for Phase Three. It would connect Margaret Elizabeth Avenue with Grayview Avenue. That would be both a road connection, and there would also be proposed to be sidewalks in there. Greenview Lane, which you can see better on the air photo, isn't proposed to be upgraded at this time. But should it be upgraded in the future, the sidewalks would, would connect there as well. So, Stone Brook Phase One came forward in, in 2017. That was for 55 townhouses at that time. Stone Brook Phase Two came forward last year. That was for an additional 24 townhouses. And as I said, Phase Three is now looking at an additional 54 townhouses. The lands would be on municipal water and municipal sewer services. They're not proposing to desert, to set aside parkland at that time, at this time. Rather, they're going the cash and lieu route. This is partially because it is an infill project. There's not a lot of land available. But also, based on the proximity to other spaces, including the arena and Ball Diamonds and, and the golf course, it might not make sense to have more park, parkland in this exact location. We did have a good public meeting with the municipality of Gray Highlands on October 29th, 2018. We'll summarize some of those public comments in just a second. And there was a zoning amendment to, to facilitate this development, which was passed late last year by the municipality of Gray Highlands. As with any plan of subdivision application, there were a number of studies and background reports that were, were done in, in association with this application, and those are available on our county website. Through the public meeting and the public consultation process, we, we heard some comments from the folks listed on the screen there. What's more important than their names is the comments themselves. So, some of the comments we heard were with respect to, to the trees on the property. And maybe I'll just flip back to the air photo. What you see is, is there's not a lot of trees on the property. It's mostly cleared, and has been for a long time. But that said, it was clear that the neighbors do value those trees that are there. So, through the recommended conditions of, of draft plan approval, if this committee decides to approve it, we are recommending tree retention to the extent feasible. There was also some concerns with respect to drainage and stormwater. The stormwater plan for this proposed subdivision in association with the other two Stone Brook subdivisions is to create a combined stormwater facility, which would be offsite to the northwest. So, in this case, the, the water would drain to Grayview Lane, and then it would go northwest from there to a combined stormwater facility, such that the municipality's not having to maintain a series of separate facilities. There was questions about whether or not these would be affordable houses, whether or not they would be rental houses, or whether or not they would be government owned. While we don't know the answer to all of those questions, we do know at this, at this stage, that it is a private developer that's proposing this development. So, at this stage, it's certainly not slated for, for, for government-owned development. But as to whether or not that developer or a future homeowner chooses to, to rent or, or sell the homes, that's unknown. In response to this question, the developer also noted that it's not known the final selling price of these units at this time, but they did stress that generally, townhomes are more affordable than large, single detached dwellings. There were some questions and concerns about the lot coverage, particularly with respect to the fact that there's single detached dwellings on either side. The one thing in this case is the lots will be fairly deep. So, in, in many cases, the proposed townhome lots are right around the 40 to 42 meter mark, which does provide a little bit more yard space, if you will, for, for the future homeowners, as well as a little bit more buffering to those existing single detached dwellings. And then there was questions about traffic flow and safety. So, they did do a bit of a traffic analysis in support of this application, which also looked at the combined traffic from the other two phases of the Stone Brook development. We did have comments from a number of agencies. Those agency comments have either been addressed, or have been incorporated in the draft plan conditions. In terms of the planning analysis, the lands are set aside for, for residential development in the Gray Highlands plan, and, and this type of development is, is promoted, as Randy mentioned in the previous presentation, in our own county plan. Our county plan sets an average development density for new residential development of 20 units per hectare. This proposed development would exceed that slightly, and be about 20.6 units per hectare. The stormwater, in terms of the neighbors' concerns, no increases in stormwater flow will be found to the neighboring properties. It is being controlled onsite, as it gets transported to that, that regional stormwater facility. At this point, the, the start and end dates for construction are not known. That was another question that was raised by the public. But we do know that the developer is eager to get going on both Phases One and Two, and, if they receive approval on Phase Three, also eager to get going there. The draft conditions for this development also require site plan control for the future townhouses, and some architectural guidelines in, in that regard. So, the municipality will have some say there to, to look at what the houses will actually look like, look like once on site. So, with all that being covered, staff at the municipal level and at the county level are satisfied that the, the proposed plan of subdivision has regard for matters of provincial interest under the Planning Act. It is consistent with provincial policy statement, and conforms to both the county and municipality of Gray Highlands official plan. As such, our recommendation is that this report be received. We do like to point out in, in all of these reports, that the information we receive from the public, and the input received from the public, really did help in shaping this recommendation. And more specifically, in this recommendation, it helped bring forward that necessity for the tree retention plan onsite. And we are recommending draft plan approval, subject to the conditions that were attached to the report. So, that's all I have, but certainly be happy to take any questions, if there are any.
Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. Thank you. I think we can. Randy is next. Is he here? Item 7C, Economic Development Committee. Sorry? Oh, yeah, sorry. Counselor Millen, seconded by Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So, this is similar to the report that was dealt with at the last committee of the whole, on the Tourism Advisory Committee. This is dealing with the Economic Development and Planning Advisor Committee. Similar to the Tourism Advisor Committee, we put out a call for applications for our public representatives on the committee. The terms of reference for that committee outline the membership as follows, as revised by, by, recently by council: the warden, six members of county council, and seven members to represent the broader economic interests and sectors, as well as the geography of Gray County. One member to represent Graber's Health Services, one member to represent Georgian College, one member to represent health of communities from the Graber's Health Unit, one member to represent the agriculture industry, and then three members from business and industry sectors. For Georgian College, Fred Varcaris, who's a previous member on this APAC, he would, still interested in being a member. The terms of reference also identify that an alternate, alternate can be identified as well. Graber's Health Services representative, based on the recent announcement by their, their CEO, we've just left that blank for now. And, but someone from Graber's Health Services will hopefully be able to be a member of that, that committee. Grabers, from the Graber's Health Unit, Linda Bebsted, who again, was on the previous APAC, would also still be the representative from the health unit. We received a total of 10 applications. Two applications were from, on the previous committee, being Ashley Chapman from Chapman's Ice Cream, and Brian Davenport from RBC Dominion Securities. So, the recommendation from, from staff's perspective, just from a continuity, and based on their expertise that they bring to the table, we're recommending that they be appointed, again, to this, this, this committee. We had eight new applications for, for applicants. And based on a review from staff, including our CIO, myself, Steve, as well as Savannah, we're recommending, based on a review of those applications, Stacy Denhan, to be our agricultural representative. She currently works for Royal Page as a real estate agent, but she also has experience in the dairy industry, food safety regulation, and so comes with some agricultural experience, for sure. And the other one we're recommending is Sharif Rahman. He's the owner of The Curry House here in Own Sound. So, we'll get a, hopefully, perspective from a, from, from the food, food trades and restaurant folks. So, those are the recommendations, in terms of the appointments for the APAC committee for the remainder of this term.
Thank you. Counselor Boddy?
Then just to add to Sharif's thing, Morton, just being a restaurant owner, he's got a degree from one of the big universities in England. I can't remember which one, in Economic Development, is it?
Yes.
He's like, we're gonna get that.
Yes.
Good. Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm just wondering, I, I don't know, is it Stacy or Stacy? I, was there anybody from production agriculture that applied to the committee? Again, I, I don't know what, it says ag rep there, but how much background she's got, I have no idea. But it concerns me that there's nobody on this committee that has involved day-to-day production agriculture.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I, based on her experience, I guess, in terms of the dairy industry, so they, I think she worked and, and lived on that dairy farm. So, so I think there's definitely direct experience from, from a farming perspective. Yeah. And I don't know if, yeah, we'd have to go into potentially closed session to, to talk about some other stuff, but anyways.
If I could, just a couple of other considerations, because I, I take your point. Two things that, that we've talked about recently. One is that a number of you are sitting on external bodies. For example, with the Ontario Federation of Agriculture, for example. And I think that something that we haven't done as much of recently, that we might consider doing again, is just allowing people who are on those external committees or boards, to bring back updates to this table, just so you're aware of what those, you know, key considerations are, if there's anything that council should be aware of. We want to make sure that we make space on the agenda for any updates that you feel would be pertinent and useful for council. The other thing with regard specific to the ag sector is the relationship that we have with Gray Ag Services. And certainly, you know, I think we're wanting to make sure that, that voice is always heard. I know that, that Randy and his staff, as well as Philly, are talking to them regularly. And I would expect that, you know, things would be surfaced there as well. Going forward, though, you know, perhaps some additional outreach to the sector would, would be beneficial.
Just to Counselor Millen's point, Brian Davenport has background in agriculture.
He does have a nice farm.
Uh-oh.
I appreciate people have, appreciate, you know, involvement in agriculture. But unless you're out there in the morning, feeding the cows, and paying the bills, you're not really invested in that industry. There's lots of people that are involved with agriculture that aren't day-to-day doing it. But anyway, I'll, I'll leave it.
Okay. I call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Looks like we can, the next, can we, can we get that done?
Can we get to the next one, Randy, in 10 minutes?
Sure.
Okay. Then I'm calling, looking for a motion. Thank you. Counselor Keveney, seconded by Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So, the-
Randy Roadshow.
Forest Management Plan was, the current Forest Management Plan was approved by council in January 2003. This guides all management activities in our, in our county forests over a 20-year period. Sorry, am I on the right report?
No.
Okay.
We're dealing with-
That one may take a bit longer.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I-
Okay.
Sorry. That's why I wondered about taking the break. Do we want to reorder? Perhaps, perhaps could we go to E? That might be shorter.
Yes.
Would, would council okay if we dealt with E? I think D would take a little bit longer.
Yeah.
Everyone's okay with that? All right. So, I'll, we'll remember the motion, the other motion. Leave it for later, but I'll call for a motion here. Counselor Millen, did you have your hand up, or?
Seconded by Counselor Carlton.
Randy, you have the floor.
Sorry about that, Mr. Warden. I jumped ahead on the agenda. So, this is a report dealing with our Forest Management Plan. Our current Forest Management Plan, as I mentioned, was approved by council back in 2003. It guides our, our management activities in, in our county forests. Everything from recreational, educational, and heritage uses of our forests, timber production, maintenance and enhancement from a habitat perspective, protecting our ecological sensitive areas, as well as how we further maybe acquire or dispose of, of county forest properties. The county contracts the Gray Solville Conservation Authority to manage our forests. Gray Solville staff have been working on an update to the Forest Management Plan. An advisory committee was established previously for the Forest Management Plan, to help provide input into the creation of that, that document. It's recommended that advisory committee be established to provide input and advice on this update for this Forest Management Plan. It would also help to address the requirements under the Forest Stewardship Council certification standards, which requires industry representatives to be providing input and advice as part of our Forest Management Plan. So, we're recommending that, in addition to the warden and two appointed council members, that representatives from logging industry, Own Sound Field Naturalists, the Stewardship Gray Bruce Network, Saugie Valley Conservation Authority, Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, Sinum Sportsman, Gray Bruce Woodlands, representatives from Saugie and Jowee Nation, and Métis Nation of Ontario, as well as Historic Saugie Métis, and up to two trail group organization representatives be members of the Forest Management Plan Advisor Committee. This is similar to the list of representatives that was on the previous advisor committee on the Forest Management Plan. There would be an open house and public meeting that would be held to receive any comments. We would take those comments back to this advisory committee, make any amendments, updates to the Forest Management Plan, and then bring eventually back a report to council for their consideration, once it's endorsed by that committee. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I wonder if I might ask one. Hopefully, I can. Have we had success in the past, getting representatives from the indigenous communities?
Through you, Mr. Warden. We've, we've had success with specific consultations, like for example, through our Recolor Gray or New Official Plan. We had some direct consultation with, with Saugie and Jowee Nation and other groups. In some cases, they're maybe reluctant to sit on any formal committees. But we want to at least extend that as, as an invitation or an offer to be part of that. If they feel that they don't have the resources or time to be able to sit on that committee, we will no doubt make sure that we'll outreach on them on a one-to-one basis, in, in terms of getting their, their input, for sure.
Other questions? We need to look for council representatives. Is there anyone that was interested? Counselor Millen is interested. See, pointing. Counselor McQueen is expressing an interest. Counselor Gamble, are you interested as well?
He's being nominated.
Yes. So, then we'll need to go with a-
Counselor McQueen's going to withdraw.
Oh, he's going to withdraw.
Counselor Gamble is willing to go on there. I'll withdraw.
You really want that lunch, don't you? Any other expression of interest? And it looks like we have our two. Counselor Mackey, you got a concerned look on your face.
No, I'm concerned that my stomach's rolling. Very hungry.
Okay. Then I will call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. We stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Mr. Warden, if I might just- Mr. Warden, if I might, just for a moment, yesterday was National Pie Day. And I saw there's pie on the counter in there, so have at it.